I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize for running a little late here at the boardwalk meeting. Today is May 6th, 2013, and time is 7:08 PM in regular meeting in Greensburg, and the council has called a quarter. This time applies to all cell phones, pagers, and any other electronic devices that this town has placed. We'll call Bridget Love.
What?
Here.
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 The council has had time to look at the minutes from making the first meeting. Are you seeing the amendments or changes? If there are none, we are in motion to accept the bill.
Some move second.
Keep the discussion. I don't know if everybody say aye?
Aye.
No same side? To the council's thinking. All business, we're clearing out all. Gary Murray? 2013 bench, more than the sun, for this third reading. Is there any questions to Gary?
I don't know that there's any questions, but I think Glenn can elaborate a little more. He had taken, after second reading, this back to discuss with the planning commissioner moment. And I think they had some recommendations, and he will probably bring them forward to see. So at this point, I'll turn to the council attendant.
Okay. Yes, I did use our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting to view that and some other items. And really, in particular, the two items that we left from our meeting last month. One dealing with the question about the maximum number of sign panels and a free sign, freestanding signs, multi-use lot. There we were, had, in the recommendation was to limit the numbers based on variations in speed and so forth. But upon further review of that, I'm recommending, if the council agrees, that we just remove that whole section. And not, given the fact that what we have currently, given the fact that that may seem like connotations rather than recommendation for good commercial space use and advertisement, I would recommend that we would strike that. There would not be any set minimum nor maximum number of panels. The size of the sign, you know, that kind of thing, height, it would still be there, but how they utilize that space will be up to the developer and the tenants of that facility. So that's, that's one recommendation. And secondly, in terms of the use of the maximum wall sign allotment, that was the other question. And this is a question raised by here last month about, by Gary, that maybe sizes may be getting bigger than what we think. My suggestion is that we, right now, we have one and a half times the length of the storefront for two-lane roads in B1 and B2, I think. At one and a half, and that's the size that we have currently in our ordinance, I believe that. Then we're greater than two lanes and so forth for business districts and the industrial districts. My recommendation would be to make that one, the one size all the way across, make it 1.75 in all the districts beyond that. So that where it's one and a half now, we leave it at one and a half. Where it's greater than that, we would make it 1.75. Give a little bit larger area for those locations and places where the speeds are greater, distances are greater because of number of lanes and so forth. Industrial parks and places, larger business districts where it might be more appropriate. Well, thank, that was, those are the two remaining topics that were left from our previous reading. And I haven't, didn't have, I just came to that conclusion during the last two days, so I didn't have a chance to talk to you about that. I don't know if that seems to satisfy some of your concerns, but they've come a lot closer yet. So I, I don't know if the rest of the council members can think about that, but...
Glenn, can I just clarify, I, you're talking about page 23, page 23, in the chart, the two columns, ones on the wall signs and the other one, the first one's on the freestanding sign multi-use.
Yeah, that's correct. Right. Mine is 22, but I, my, I got it over. I didn't reprint the latest one, I just looked it online, what honestly, what changes were made, so I didn't. But yeah, those, that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the number of sign panels. That category would be eliminated. And where it's designated as one and a half now would remain so, where it's designated anything larger than that for wall signs, I would make it consistently 1.75. And that's the recommendation. Jamie, you got any thoughts?
I'm okay with that.
I know there's been a lot of changes in this ordinance, and it's been a couple years coming, a lot of works went into it, and we certainly appreciate the efforts that went into this. I have one question. With all the changes that we've got, there are a lot of guidelines, several guidelines that have been changed. Who's going to enforce this? And it can be a good law, but...
Well, when somebody is going to put a new sign, they have to do something. That's when it's over, it's over, you have to determine if it's within that period. Tight, the size of signs, that's what's done now, that's what will be done in the future as well.
And, and then, that's true. But there's also, in current ordinance and in this ordinance, we haven't changed a whole lot there in terms of temporary signs and enforcement of that.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a big issue there.
So that's another question, how we're going to go about it, what we're going to do about that.
And the last complaint on temporary sign, ask, all right.
Will we have a grace period per se to get rid of the temporary signs or even some of the other things? I know some of these are grandfathered, but will there be a grace period to make this transition?
Well, you know, we're a lot, we're a lot of ordinances, you set a date for it to go into effect, and we try to get the information out there, but it's going to be able to happen. I don't think the newspaper, I can listen to the radio, you know, they don't pay attention to, understand to them. They formulate that they are a violation of the ordinance. Someone who was, I just know, who's in this situation, we see it, our conscience ourselves, or someone who was passing, saying, hey, did you hear this?
Like the trash ordinance, I, I think it really is important that we give people time to transition through this, because there are some significant adjustments that maybe have to be made by some anyway. I would think that till our first, it'd be a reasonable time, a couple of months out, it'd be a reasonable time to say, that's when it's effective. Or we can make, I'm asking this, I don't know, can we just make parts of it be effective immediately? Or can we make other parts effective at a, at a future date? And I'm thinking primarily in terms of, you know, a new sign being built, we ought to make sure in the next sixty days, it might be, makes sense to go by the new guidelines. The temporary sign and that kind of thing, it might be better that we be able to give transition through.
And that's really the main thing I'm thinking on the temporary sign. If you take someone's temporary sign away, and I can take a long distance, but has a temporary sign, should we give them some time to put a, a sign in place? We certainly don't want to affect anyone's business.
I think we should, this is my personal opinion, but the people who have temporary signs as well as the permanent signs, that's the difference.
That's the difference, yes.
Yeah, that's gonna be hard to, that's gonna be hard to figure it out. And I think we're gonna have to make one way or the other, either temporary sign section goes into effect hence, and this is effective. Well, that's each.
Yeah, I, I think if you're, if you're going to, if you're so inclined to parse it out, I would, one, recommend as little parsing as possible. So I would, I would recommend if your concern is that someone, that several businesses in town may have temporary signage, that you don't want to have that immediately, have that problem, then I would suggest... My preference would be that you pass the entire thing and make section, ordinance, ordinance section 155.082 effective and, you know, and enforce at some later date. That's your temporary sign provision.
We can notify anybody that we know has a temporary sign that is, would require permit by the new ordinance, say, effective this day, your clock, X number of days, I don't know that you decided that one... Well, it hasn't... A hundred percent either, but you're gonna have so many days this year, you can have a temporary sign. And it's...
Yeah, we were ninety, I thought of that.
Okay, so you can have it out there for ninety days over the year. Your clock starts ticking July 1st, if that's the day you want it to take effect. We can notify them earlier than...
Yeah, I think...
Saying in effect, you, you have a sign that will now be governed by this, and you need to contact us and let us know the periods you dream of taking it out there.
I guess I had, I had forgotten that that was part of the ordinance, that they could have a temporary sign for a certain period of time.
Yes.
I guess we could leave it as is, but tell them, here's thirty days, or your ninety days starts now.
Your ninety days, if that's all you get in a calendar year of when your, this ordinance comes in, then, you know, you need to let us know what nine days you're gonna have it there, if it's continual ninety days, then you've got to, maybe you would.
All right, okay, unsatisfied with that.
Gentlemen, no one knows this ordinance will change, say, better than on the city side than Glenn and Gary Murray. And do we have time to go through these changes? The critical changes, not the legal changes, the critical changes, or how many are? Is the, for example, is the size of the sign in ordinance Cleveland, is that still intact?
Yeah.
What other signs is increasing the height and the size besides still intact?
Say for the, well, if they agreed to the changes, they recommended, that's one, with those, with those changes.
And, you know, and like I said, maybe I will support whatever this council decides. I just think it's very important, it's all good, here is one. Once you open the ordinance up, two will hurt your signage. You can't ever go back, and maybe you wouldn't want to. But I think the council needs to envision what it can be based on this ordinance in the future. What does it mean from one, one business to another? And one business, that is more small or larger, taller? Are the others, have to do the same things as soon as they can afford to, if they think it's an investment for...
Well, here, one, I thought we did that last meeting, I thought I put three things pretty carefully last meeting. And I asked everybody to do that after the first time it was set out, ask everybody to read it and then to think, and come with questions. What we changed here in terms of the two areas that I thought were most, of most concern, I have addressed, I think. At least was expressed at the meetings. And so I, I think I, I think we've addressed those, but I'll leave it to the council to, if not, that's fine. I just think that we've, we've looked at, you know, we're talking about height of some signs, you know, adjusted, and they're higher with, and in some places it's square footage, and some signs a little larger, but we're talking about, you know, industrial size areas, zoning, we're not talking about changing significantly the size of the signs in most business areas. So, as far as I know, I think we, we have, but I'll, I'll let it up to the members of the council, I guess, to see whether they have it.
I would add, if I may, before you get too busy in those conversations, Sean Green, who was, played a large part in providing the appendix numbers, did note that there were several, or two columns that were devoid of numbers on the appendix in the B3 section. He did provide me with some handwritten numbers that could go in there, and I have you to read those to the members if you would like. At this point, I don't want to force calling any conversations, if you'd like me to wait till afterward.
I feel like it's better now than later.
On the appendix one, column B3, with lanes of traffic greater than two, the numbers that Sean is proposing would be 150 and 36, which would basically be a continuation of the two-lane, same size, moving down to multi-use.
I've, I've lost.
Sorry.
B2, B3, greater than two lanes? And we're number of...
Under, um...
Maximum number?
Single use lot, yeah, maximum number would still be one.
One, yeah.
And the number under that would be 150, the maximum area square footage would be 150.
And the height is 36?
Height, yeah, 36. Uh, 36, moving down to the multi-use lot, again, the maximum number would be one.
Number of signs?
If the, yeah, number would, number of signs would be six, unless that's removed per your prior suggestion. The maximum square footage per sign would be 150. And the, uh, let's see, maximum height...
3.75.
Yeah, Sean, you actually have 30 right here, you don't mean that, do you?
I think it'd be consistent with...
To be consistent, it'd be 75.
Good catch.
Okay.
I'll put that's all on that one. On the B3, greater than two, with mileage of, uh, speed limit of forty to forty-five miles per hour, you would have maximum number of signs of one. A maximum area of 250. Maximum height of 48. Maximum number, again, is under multi-use lot, would be one. Maximum number of sign panels would be six, unless removed. Maximum, uh, square footage would be 275. Maximum height would be 75. Also, I will just point out, one other thing that Sean caught for me is the typo under section 155.072, letter A, number four, A, I. I just have a phone instead of of. And that's it.
Chris, say that again.
Sure.
157, or 155.072, section A, number four, Paul's hurt. Under the first section, I, meaning no portion of the sign frame or cabinet. In the second, second part of that line, I have a...
Reverse.
Reverse letters. Actually, I don't think that should be of, I think it should be from.
Shouldn't it be, I love this one.
No, great, I guess it would be, yeah.
There's some things that I do have concerns with, I don't get wrong, I want to get this, go on with it, get it taken care of, face implemented way, that's going to be great. As far as on the list, is the first one in the state of Indiana, we want to have sign sizes by the speed limit?
You know, that might be in the chart. I can't, I can't believe that there's not, in larger areas, metropolitan areas, that they don't have that, that different sizes are allowed based on speed limits. But I, I don't know that's basic. I guess I'm not, I'm not opposed to being first, so...
So Mr. Murray, our signs in the third mile zone, make them straight, this is I, 35. When we implement this to order this into effect, they will be taller and will be larger.
It should definitely be taller. By way of scale, the hospital got a variance for their height, their 45 feet. I think if you have a bunch of signs sticking up at 75 feet, it's gonna be out scaled for what we have around town.
And the size of the sign is very increased.
In some areas, they're a little smaller, I think the 150 is smaller, we allow 200 right now. Well, I believe there's some areas in that that allow, if it's a 55 mile an hour speed limit, which if somebody asks, footage on the bypass could have, I think it's 375 square foot, if I remember, if I remember the square footage right. That's almost double the largest signs that we have now. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, once you get them that big, in the way that this ordinance is crafted, if they want to do a face plate change, they don't need to come in and see us. The place wants to change to areas, all they've got to do is change the face of the sign, and their grandfather and their brother will be told. The, the maximum size of 30 to 35 miles an hour, maximum square feet of a freestanding sign, it's 50 square feet, the maximum height is 18. The max, and a multi-use lot on 30 to 35 miles an hour, we're talking about Lincoln Street, is, maximum square feet of that is 75 square feet, and the maximum height is 18. Reason right from the chart, they're allowed one sign in each location. The maximum wall size sign is one and a half times millennial feet of the frontage, which is exactly the same as we have today. No ordinance.
Is that the frontage of the lot or the building?
Frontage of...
Storefront.
Storefront. Maximum sign allotment square feet like the storefront. So I, I don't know, I didn't go back and compare it, I don't think those are two to some of what we have, correctly. Pretty much like those we got. We have increased sizes on places where there's larger, larger volume traffic, greater than two lanes. I don't, and I see that you're looking at some of these signs that look big, but we don't have any places that, or many, we got one, maybe.
Well, I can figure it out for you later. For the hospital and the business district.
All right. And there, the maximum height is 30 instead of 18, and the maximum square foot is 150.
What is the maximum?
It's 200 for the sign, but the height is not 18. So sign age, 150 or less than...
First, I'm saying, I think you would agree with me anytime today, we both understand, we should know. And if the council understands what the changes are, go for it, it's time. If you don't understand what the changes are, then it's time to find out if you do. Because when something happens, the council decides that. And how you vote, it's your vote, if you need to understand what the changes are, whether they're good or bad.
Just seems every time you talk about this sign ordinance, there's something that kind of jumps out at. Are you suggesting that we put this off? Are you suggesting we meet with the planning commission before we pass the bill, or the ordinance?
I think what really clarifies things when we make it simple is what we have now versus what the improvements, and I'll call it improvements, for the future are. We need to know what the differences are.
And, and as I look through it, I see more positive, obviously, than I do questionable. But the email that you sent out there said this would be the fir, and you mentioned it would be the first ordinance in Indiana that you're aware of based on this criteria. I'm just wondering how that would affect new businesses coming in? Would they look at ordinances like this, and would that discourage them?
I think it's investment that they may want to make, that's up to them. I don't even want to put businesses in a situation where they feel if they have to buy something new, to stay up with their neighbors.
Right. But my, my thoughts just kind of went to, you know, new businesses coming in, we, we certainly don't want to do anything to discourage that.
Find people by signage, we want them to be able to advertise their wares that they have by signage. We want to, because this is not going to work successfully.
This ordinance doesn't require it to be that size, that's the maximum. Obviously, based on businesses' needs and location, size, and so forth, they're going to, and probably wherewithal, they're going to make decisions based on, you know, whether it's going to be scaled right or not scaled right according to the proportional of their building. But, you know, we've had, we have multiple times when people will require or request variances to, you know, as mentioned, the hospital requiring a variance because of what they thought was a better or appropriate or more modern, whatever it might be, sign or signage, they, it was something for them?
No, that was not even the building. That new addition on the building is only 45 feet tall. If you've got a sign in this place that tall, it's out scaled.
If you've got a sign in this place that tall, it's out scaled.
No, I agree with you, it surely would be. I don't know that we've allowed a sign by stuff that tall.
Third mile an hour speed limit.
There's one that's seventy-five feet, and if you read it off right, it suggests it was on a V three.
Okay, definitely.
Now, I only answered your question, when I worked on the private site for commercial developers, yes, they do look at the sign ordinance when they come in. It is one of the criteria, when they look at these buildings, they look at the zoning, they look at sign ordinances. Have I ever seen one walk away from a site because of the sign ordinance? No. They may do with what they had, there's certain demographics that they will look at, median income within a one mile, five mile radius, age populations, um, and things like that to determine where they're located. And, yes, signage is a variant, but the maximum height is, is thirty.
I think what.
Is, is the hos-, is the hospital considered a multi-use lot? I don't think it is, I think it's a single use lot, the height would be thirty-six.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, I mean, you've got, that's one of the taller buildings in town, it's forty-five. If you've got a, a sign that's almost double that in height, in any district. I mean, the, the, in the tallest building in town, I think it's allowed to be thirty-six feet.
So, sorry, you're a multi-use lot, uh, pretty much anywhere above that thing's up.
Remember Chamber President here, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chris Weller, but do you have an opinion on this?
I want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you put me on the spot.
Too close to the door, you couldn't.
I'm in my league. I know you folks have worked on this for several years, I don't, I think that, uh, I believe that businesses will still look to come to town and they will deal with the ordinance that are in place. Will it stop somebody from coming to town? I would personally say no, I think I agree with Gary, and he says that they just learn how to deal with that. Now, the question is, I guess, how do we keep the town attractive and make it so people want to come to town? And I'll tell you what, the expert in this area, even though it's his business, is Sean Green. I would also ask him his thoughts, and I know that his opinion has been valued, and his efforts have been valued. So, I've got.
Thank you, that gives me some information, thank you.
So gentlemen, that, you understand the changes completely?
I think I do.
Jamie, do you understand that what we have down, what the changes?
Yeah, I think we, we talked about some of them before, we actually sent out an email and some of the differences, Gary sent it out last month, so. I mean, I, I think overall, it's going to be a lot of positive, I think there's a lot of positives here for businesses, and I hope they can attract businesses.
Also positives, what are the negatives? Are there any negatives here?
Well, I mean, just listening, I guess, the negatives being brought up is the height of the sign, so, what is the next step? Do we need to, to look at the si-, the size of the sign, uh, to make it specific to an area, but the sign that's seventy-five feet or seventy-two feet is in a district that we don't have.
At least, yeah.
And a B three and a fifty to fifty-five.
We've got forty-five and five lanes. Well, probably a new. Is that how you want to see that area as well?
That's a question.
I mean, you, you need to visualize the aesthetics of it and report to the community. And right now, we're working with new development, we're building a three-lane road, we're basically from the bypass, by Lincoln Inn and down. That will probably have a thirty to forty mile an hour speed limit on it. So, it will really be an extension of Lincoln Street, but instead of V two, it'll be on, it'll be three the area, um, it's currently zone that.
It's going to be a three-linked road to the right?
Yes. But just like Lincoln Street, three-linked road, but it may, just depending on what the dogs out there, could be a forty mile an hour. I mean, Lincoln was designed for thirty-five, but then you want to change the speed limit. Thirty, as it was.
And I don't think we can say we know enough, maybe you say, I think we know enough what we know with this. I think it's important that the councilmen understand what they're looking for. If this is something you don't, shut the gate on once you do it. I said, I want to get this on, I want to go forward, I want this, what we've been trying, working on for two years, ended after thousands and thousands of dollars. And for example, the Councilman Teddy's personal time, that he has spent as well, trying to get this taken care of, get it accomplished. We need to come to an end, and we need to do it soon, but I encourage you to understand what the changes are. It's not like you're doing orders, there are one change made, there's several changes here, probably most of them are pretty good, there might be some negative. That's, the positives, we take those for granted, but the negatives, we need to look at it, we need to see if we need to change it. If there are any negatives, you may consider it negative, what you see for the future for the city, you know, the speed limits that's so deemed to be this way. And whether people will do size of signs or speed limits, they may need to.
Yeah. Things for visuali-, visualization effects, the story on the building is somewhere between ten and twelve feet. So, if you've got a seventy-five foot sign, you're looking at a six-story building. In height. And is that appropriate for, and the most of our V three area is all out of us for bypass.
Thank you, Freddie. Give more information, Steve.
Can I ask a question, Gary will answer it. Would this be a downturn for a new business? I'm going to answer that a lot of the time here again. So, what would you think people would think, business coming in at this moment?
I don't think it would be a down thing for business at all. I think if you have, say, it develops out there with small one acre lots for business, you've got two hundred acres out there, you want two hundred seventy-five foot tall signs. Stick it up out there. To me, it's a good place, that's me, I'm on the town. I mean, what I think is within scale, but those five feet would be more appropriate in my opinion, but. I mean, that's a three-story building. Most of the commercial stuff doesn't develop in three stories anyway, so.
If one does, it's a normal, but. You can't have it short.
I think typically, the square footages are in line, I think in some areas, the height might give a lot. Other than that, I, I agree with what Councilman Teddy said. Then again, I don't think, even this Renzler said, it's not going to prevent them from, they'll learn to deal with it. And I, I had a, a client that used to put signage everywhere, including on his trash cans, and had banners on every one of his light poles. And in one place in Ohio, he only got two hundred square foot for double frontage on two roads, and he was used to having five hundred. But it didn't make him walk away from the site.
So, like Terry, are you understanding this, or are you?
Yeah, I understand, I'm just wanting to know what new business would that guy don't build, I don't have any idea.
Well, I think you got the answer on new business, that they're going to come, if they want to come here in the first place, whatever.
I mean, I.
Now, thinking of the visualization of a seventy-five foot sign, two hundred seventy-five foot signs, that.
Just a thought, Glenn, I mean, I know you put a lot of time and effort into this, but would it be possible to take it back to the planning commission, just to review the heights, again, maybe talk to them, I, I think that's.
I don't know that they're going to have any more, um, insight than what we're getting here tonight. And here's, here's, um, here's a question, here's an offer of thought. Where we have fifty-foot signs, making that thirty-five, where there are seventy-five foot signs, making it fifty. That would bring it back into better scale, it moves, it moves, uh, the, and I, I'm not wet to the numbers, I'm, I'm trying to find.
On the ground.
Yeah, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to get this past, past us, past me anyway. I don't care about the rest of it, and, you know, and, um, and my, my point is that it, it, the eighteen and thirty, again, those are pretty much in line of what we've got, have been, the others have moved up. And as I said, we, we're talking, instead of fifty foot, you make that thirty-five, so the seventy-five, you make it fifty. And I, this is just trying to find some common ground to satisfy my colleagues here, and, and I understand seventy-five, it doesn't seem like a lot, and that, and that is, think of what the neighborhood of, um, V three and the I, the empty, that places where I'm at, you wouldn't have two hundred signs, I would hope, but, um, so, that's a thought. As, as one way of, of moving this. And I'm also very satisfied if you all think that you want to take it back and, and, uh, you do it on your own, come up with some better, better numbers, and I'll be happy to, uh, be supportive of you all doing that.
Do you have a seventy-five?
Do I have any, uh, dollars, those are seventy-five, eighty feet.
With your interstate, so you're allowed a ninety, like you're only talking minimally shorter than that. Oh, I'm sure I'm.
So if there would be a business coming in that actually needed a seventy-five foot sign, they could come and ask for a variance for their design?
Well, if they're within, I believe it's fifteen hundred feet.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. And half a mile of the center of an interchange, they're allowed a ninety foot sign.
Personally, I, if we make the changes, I think Glenn has just proposed, or if we change those heights, I'm, I'm satisfied. I'd like to take this.
Can I, can I make, uh, just to make sure I know what I'm, what I'm putting down, uh, so we're talking about on the, you're not talking anywhere in the chart where it was a fifty foot, you're talking about specifically on the freestanding signs for multi-use lots, where it goes from thirty to fifty to seventy-five, then seventy-five across the board. You're saying where it says fifty in those maximum heights, change that to thirty-five, where it says seventy-five, change that to fifty. Correct? And that would be the same also in the, basically the other.
In the I area.
The I as well, so it'd be the same as in the Bs and Is.
Yeah, and then freestanding signs, the single use lots, where we've got eighteen, thirty, I would, I would, and thirty-six and forty-eight. Um, I would make that fifty-six the same, the maximum height is fifty. And, uh, where the two forties are, make that thirty-five, that'd be consistent with, uh, make it consistent up and down the, up and down the line. Um, there, um.
Now, would you do the same in the I category?
Right. Higher than I one, greater than two, uh, and fifty, fifty-five would be thirty-five. The next one would be thirty-five, the others would be.
Okay.
And that was also the other suggestions you made earlier, right? We're going to strike the, uh, the section on the numbered panels.
Yes, I've struck the section on the numbered panels, and I've also changed the maximum wall sign allotment square footage to one point seven five. With the exception of the two that were already added, one point five four.
If you are all comfortable with it. So, if there are changes that have discussed, probably that we pass.
Ordinance on thirty. Uh, are we, uh, is it, is it second?
I'll second it.
My only question then would be, are we going to make any provision for the temporary signs that have been implemented, uh, race track? Can we do that, can we, my question is, can we pass this to make it effective June one? Uh, but is the implementation, we can, uh, recommend that the, the ordinance be, um, implemented or enforced after July first? As far as the temporary signs go?
I really don't think, and I made that comment, uh, recommendation, but after what Gary's brought up, we're giving them ninety days anyway.
Okay.
I, I, I think we really need to do that, my opinion.
Well, just notify them, they have one, the maximum number they is effective of the ordinance is ninety.
Right.
Come to the park and tell us what they, what ninety you want to use, if it's all consecutive ninety, then we'll tell them it's going to be gone. If it's not, then there's provision in there that we remove it at their cost.
Okay, so, whoever understands the changes, and great, uh, correct, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, so, the motion is to approve, as amended, per discussion tonight, uh, with an effective date of June first, two thousand and thirteen. Is that correct, if you, if you want?
Jim, do we don't have any businesses we think might be affected by this temporary sign? Maybe a bulk.
Not a good deal, I can think of a lot of them. I think if we make this effective June first, and also get everybody like, each July or September, that doesn't talk over first.
I think affected June, June, July, August, September first, that's what I said.
Okay, this is the third reading. We'll call it, please, Bridget.
Good, Blake?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes, that's your, that's the third reading, it's called, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Glenn, thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Sean, we appreciate all your input, truly do, and Glenn, who's been on for a while, I appreciate your emphasis. Now, if I see the handoff of the signs. New business tax payments.
Mr. Mayor? May I ask you small questions?
Sure.
Sean Green, and thank you, because I could use some more time with my wife as well, besides the eager to these meetings, and she's so excited about it. I did not, there's, uh, this is about definitions of projecting signs and flag mount signs, which in the sign industry.
which, in the sign industry, we see those as the same thing, but there's no definition for flag mount in here, but it, it does have discussion about it. Chris would be okay with adding that, or the team on adding that to projecting, being the same or similar definition, or adding a new definition, just so there's no confusion in the future.
What's the two terms, Sean?
I'm sorry?
What, the two terms?
Um, projecting sign and a flag mount sign, basically, your, a wall sign is projecting off the wall as a sign, let's say if you didn't have room to put a pole sign.
Flag, flag mount sign is hung out there.
Yes. And both definitions are, or both words are used in here, but there's so many definitions for projecting. And the last item is on penalties. It mentions that the penalty, if something is not followed, will be the responsibility of the owner of the business and or sign company. And I just feel that the sign company's really not responsible for that aspect. I do agree with a fine being given if sign company's doing something wrong, but in our profession, the only time we're responsible for picking up the sign permitted for a licensing scholar like in Indianapolis, Louisville, Kentucky, and Cincinnati, Ohio. Other than that, I, I disagree with it being our responsibility in this ordinance. Thank you.